Good evening. It is Tuesday, June 28th at 4:30 and we have a full dais and I am calling this meeting to order. We will be going into executive session on the following items. Item 2A, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 to seek the advice of legal regarding litigation matters related to MC, Bastrop 71 LP and 71 Retail Partners LP, Bastrop County Court Matters 1842-21, 423-7941, 1916-335 and 1936-335. And Item 2B, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.071 and 551.074 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding potential real estate transactions with Bastrop County Emergency Service District Number Two. And Item 2C, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding possible mediated dispute resolution of the pending ethics complaint against Robert Okay, it is 6:14 and we are out of executive session and we will be moving on to item number three. Take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session. I believe I have a motion for item 2A.
I move to approve Resolution R. 2022-57 approving a mediator's proposal on pending litigation and authorizing the city manager to execute a settlement agreement.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. Resolution 2022-57 is approved. An emotion for item 2B?
Yes, Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to execute a non-binding letter of intent with the Emergency Service District Number Two regarding fire station number two.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council-- Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion for the letter of intent with Bastrop County Emergency Services District Number Two stands approved. Motion for item 2C?
Motion, item 2C. I move to approve Resolution R. 2022-58 expressing support for a mediated settlement of pending ethics complaint.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee.
A second.
I have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes four to zero. It is 6:16 and we are going to be in recess until 6:30 when we will come back and start our regular meeting at 6:30. 6:16 and we are in recess. the year. Tuesday, June 28th at 6:30, we have a full dais. I'm calling this meeting to order. We are very lucky this evening. We have two gonna be fourth graders and so far at Mina that makes them big men and women on campus next year. So they're pretty excited about that. We have Evan Odom. If Evan would please come forward and you're gonna stand up here by the podium and Kate Bray if she'll come along with him. Both of these young people are a part of the Mina Elementary Harry Potter Club. Don't hide behind the podium. Take a step towards her. They want to see your smiley faces. There you go. And Evan is in Hufflepuff and if you don't know what that is, you live under a rock and you need to find a child. And I was shocked to find that Kate is a member of Slytherin because I know Jason-- I know her dad and that surprised me. But there is a very good reason because apparently in her first group, there was an obnoxious person and it's a really good idea to get away from annoying people. So that's why she became Slytherin. And Evan likes to draw things, all kinds of things, and Kate likes math and I think I have her talked into being a civil engineer. So I'm very happy, very, very happy about that. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please rise, these young people are gonna lead us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I protect the sky, our flag of majesty, Texas, one state, under God, alone and indivisible.
And I have not seen-- oh, there he is. We have Chaplain Barti. The Bray family was gonna pull in just in case-- because I didn't see you when you walked in. If you would please remain standing for the invocation, we have Pastor Dustin Barti with Bastrop Christian Church and we're very happy to have you with us this evening.
Okay. Good evening. Let us pray. Lord, we are thankful to be together tonight. Thank you for all of the many ways that you work and move in our fair city. Thank you for each one here, servant leaders, council members. Thank you for every worker that happens within all the different elements to make this city hum as it does. We are so thankful to get to witness and celebrate great events like Juneteenth, all the way up to this upcoming weekend honoring our freedoms. What a special place we have here in Bastrop. May the discussions tonight be rich and may wisdom be a part of decisions and thoughtfulness. We are so thankful for our leaders. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you. If you guys will stay up here, Colin, let's get a quick picture of these awesome young people. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, you guys are free to go. Evan said he had always wanted to meet the mayor and he had a question and his question was, "Why in the world do you want to be the mayor?" So we had a little conversation about that. All right, Colin, I have just a couple of things before we get started. I-- is-- June 21st was the International Yoga Day and we had yoga classes going on all over the place. So if you participated in that, we had one of the classes right here in council chambers. So if you participated in that, thank you for doing that. And then, Council, you'll be receiving a copy, but I wanted to call to your attention that the Juneteenth Committee sent a letter today that just couldn't say enough nice things about the partnership that the City of Bastrop did with the Juneteenth Committee. You have a copy of that letter and I wanted to make sure that I drew your attention to this. They wanted to acknowledge not only the assistance in planning and implementing their celebration, but the participation, the presence of so many individuals representing the City of Bastrop during the Juneteenth weekend was extremely encouraging to the community as well as the committee. So you'll get a copy of that letter and we have several members of the Juneteenth Committee in the audience tonight. You guys want to stand up? We'll give you-- let's give you a round of applause. Okay, Colin, let's jump into the mayor's report. In the upper left-hand corner, that was the ribbon cutting for Texas Vision Clinic and yes, there are glasses on my shirt and yes, it wasn't an accident. So they were-- they were-- Ms. Wumble wanted to get a picture of the eyeglasses. Just below that is our own very Terry Moore who was the-- was reading and she was reading the book and yes, she's banging on her chest and there was a room full of gorillas. So our library programs during the summer really bring out a lot of folks to participate. And speaking of that, just below, you will see the wonderful magician, Oscar Munoz. They had to keep adding chairs and opening up. I think they were at over 200 people that came to see the magician. I don't think it had anything to do with it was 2 o'clock and inside the air-conditioned convention center as opposed to the other places that one might want to be. Colin, if you go up real-- just slightly up, there is a picture of me with Lisa Holcomb and M.A. Sterling with the Texas Theater-- Texas Network of Theaters. Had all the young people come in, TNT. They did a fantastic job. I know shockingly, 600 kids that were here for plays found-- most of them found their way to the Sugar Shack for some reason. That was a place that they wanted to visit. Just to the-- just to the side of that, you see a picture of me with Pastor Roland Nava. They've not only improved their kitchen, but they've also opened kind of a coffee house. So that was a picture at that ribbon cutting. Just below that, you will see former Mayor Pro Tem Bill Peterson and yes, that is my '57 and yes, I have an awesome husband that bought that for me. But we were at the Lost Pines-- the Silver Pines Nursing Home. The Bastrop area cruisers has a tradition of going the Friday before Father's Day weekend and taking the classic cars and it is wonderful to see the residents come out and I had a number of them saying, "My grandma drove that car. I drove that car." And they enjoy the classic cars and we enjoy visiting with them. So I spent some time doing that. And then just to the right of that, two Juneteenth things happened. On the top, we all recognize the wonderful picture of Hannibal and he-- what an artist. He is so very talented and we really enjoyed the opportunity to get to hear him play. And you can see, I did my best to catch the welcome to the Bastrop Juneteenth Celebration, which in my opinion was the best one that I've absolutely ever been to. It was just outstanding. And then just below that, I did take my car to the very first time ever be in a car show. The Blue Flames had their car show and I actually got top 30, I think, and I-- Mr. Kirkland got-- Councilmember Kirkland got top 10. So of course, I will bow to his Corvette, but I was still pretty proud of my Chevy. All right, Colin, we can go to the next page. I was at a TML board meeting last week that was in Houston because the TML chair is Mayor Pro-- Deputy Mayor Martha Castick-Tatum from Houston and so the board meeting was in the hometown for the board president. And what she did on Thursday night was we all went to NASA for a tour of NASA. And I got to hear Christy Cook speak and Christy Cook spent 328 days on the International Space Station. And that is only topped by astronaut Scott Kelly, who was at 340. And it's my understanding there's some conspiracy theorists that believe they brought her down so that she didn't beat Scott Kelly. I don't know anything about that. I just know she was a really impressive person to listen to and it was a great meeting. Lot of things going on as we prepare for the legislative session. And then if you go to the next page, I know a number of us will be at the tax workshop that is going on on Thursday and I think there's several of us going to the TML Region 10 meeting that night. And I am wearing my red, white, and blue for Patriotic Festival. I know they're still looking for volunteers, so if you are so inclined, please help them out. And next week is already the first week in July and I will remind folks that Thursday night is Farm Street Opry. With that, I-- let's go to Councilmember Kirkland and his top 10 award for the car show. Mr. Kirkland?
Certainly. So also my first car show and I was honored to participate in that event with the Blue Flame Cruisers for Juneteenth. And I did-- I took a top 10 finish with my '63 Corvette convertible, so that was kind of fun. And simultaneously participated in the Juneteenth Parade and so ran between two venues because those events were at the exact same time. You know, several other things this week, but the most meaningful was Juneteenth and I really gained a lot of perspective from that. And I want to thank Cheryl for encouraging us all to participate and for the rest of the community who did everything they did to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kirkland. It was a fantastic, fantastic event and a really great weekend.
And one-- sorry, one last thing. Councilmember Plunkett also sort of indirectly walked away with a top 30 finish.
Yeah, he had to buy his though. That's a whole-- that's a whole different story. Councilmember Crouch?
Yes, I was-- I got to ride my bike in the Juneteenth Parade. So that was fun to have a big flag on the back of my bike and a couple of swirly birds on the front of it. I hadn't got to do that in a while. And I was real happy to see the new public survey on the city's planning website. I guess it just went in this past couple of weeks. I'm glad to see that and hopefully we get a lot of good feedback on that. And then I've started this-- I started the Sister City, looking into the Sister City program and I've finished up all that piece of it. So I want to bring that to you guys for maybe the next meeting so you can look at it and see that. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Crouch, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Okay, I don't have an old car and I didn't ride the bike. I scooped ice cream during your parade, so that's all I did. And I really don't have anything to offer except for this past weekend, I was up at Dallas for the trade show that I go to for the store. And you know, everybody wears a badge at the thing. And twice, someone said, "Wow, you're from Bastrop. I hear about all this stuff going on in Bastrop." I was like, usually they never even know where's Bastrop. Where do you have to go? I'd try to tell them I'm at-- it was kind of neat to hear people actually know where the town was and had-- they hadn't yet to been here, but they've been hearing all the positive things. So that was all I've done.
That's great. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Plunkett?
Well, I just wanted to reiterate what's already been said about the Juneteenth Committee and all the events that surrounded that were just amazing. I don't think I went to all of them. And just very much enjoyed myself, learned a ton. And as far as the car show goes, it was-- I blame Councilmember Kirkland and the mayor for peer pressuring me into getting that car, so.
So you have to tell them what you bought?
A '63 Sedan DeVille Cadillac. That's cute.
Ooh.
Or Perry Mason car.
Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. Councilmember Lee?
So of course, I also attended the Bastrop Juneteenth Celebration.
And recognized.
And recognized at the celebration. I had a great time. If you know me, you know I love to dance. So I danced, danced, danced. I think Councilmember Plunkett's wife can outdance me, but she was a ball of fun and I had a dance partner all weekend. I also visited or went out to the Rosenwald Centennial Celebration, got there in time to hear some speeches, eat some great food, and actually toured that school. I hadn't toured it and actually I thought it was just part of that church that sits there. So I enjoyed doing that and hearing about the plans for the Rosenwald School. I also went to the car show, walked around, took a bunch of pictures. My favorite car, I'm gonna say the Tiffany Blue car for Mayor Schrader, but that Corvette is bad. His Corvette is off the chain. So I--
Hence my top 30 and he got the top 10.
Yes. So I had a good time at the car show, but the-- I want to thank everyone, all of you, my councilmembers, mayor, city manager, Trey, Curtis. I mean, everyone really came out and participated in the Juneteenth events. I was so happy to see everyone there. I also think it gave us an opportunity to bond outside of the dais. And then, of course, the effort in the community to come out and participate. I'm looking forward to seeing what that committee does next year already. I went to my first cemetery board meeting. I am now going to go walk around in the cemetery. Some of you may not know, I am somewhat of a ghost hunter. So I plan on waiting till dusk and walking around in the cemetery so I can get a feel for the land out there now that I'm on that board. And then--
You might need to contact the police department because it closes at dusk and we don't want to-- so they'll escort you. You're a councilmember, but please don't climb over the fence.
I don't want to be locked in there after it closes either.
I saw Vicky's eyes go, "Wah."
And then I'm looking forward to 4th of July this weekend and asking everyone to please heed the warnings about fireworks in the city, please. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. All right, yay, Council. Good job. Moving on to item 7C, City Manager's Report. Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah, yay, Council. You've covered all my topics. It's great.
Good. Are we done?
Yeah, we are pretty much done. I do have a couple of photographs from last weekend's Juneteenth celebrations as well and Pastor Jackson did want to acknowledge how much we appreciate your gracious letter of thanks to the council and staff for working with your committee to put that on. And yes, in the middle there is a photograph of Mayor Schrader receiving her top 30 award. Oh, and there's Councilmember Lee. And Mr. Crouch mentioned earlier the Planning Department survey. This was a suggestion of his a while back and we did just today, I think. We are live and online with this survey. So users of our online permitting and inspection system will be prompted to-- for the opportunity to answer just a few questions. It shouldn't take long. And council members, you'll be able to see the results of this survey and how well we're satisfying our customers in the planning and development process through that system at-- in future quarterly reports. And thank you, Councilmember Lee, for the acknowledgement of the importance of fireworks safety. Fireworks are always illegal within the City of Bastrop, not just on 4th of July and not just when there's a fireworks ban in the county. We will be putting up some signage throughout the city to let people know that we will be enforcing that. It never fails that it happens and we get quite a few phone calls in the police department, asking the police department to respond. Good news, July 2nd, there will be a fireworks display safely done as part of the Patriotic Festival. And yes, yesterday's rain certainly helped. And Council, you will meet again on July the 12th and there are several important items on that agenda. You will hear the annual presentations from those groups, nonprofit organizations who are applying for community support funding. The subcommittee that the city count-- that the mayor appointed at your last meeting has been given some material on that, that's Councilmembers Rogers and Kirkland. So that'll all end up as part of the overall budget decision-making that the entire council makes. Next council meeting, you'll hear from our consultant who's been working on updating our impact fees that help pay for our water and wastewater improvements. And there will be a corresponding ordinance that you'll be asked to consider that evening as well. We won't ask you to vote on July 12th on the rules of procedure, but we will present some suggested amendments to the existing rules of procedure for council to consider and we'll ask you to vote on that at a meeting afterwards. And CFO Waldron is working on some mid-year budget amendments, nothing too out of the ordinary, but we want to get that cleaned up before the end of the fiscal year and we'll ask you to consider that on first reading on July the 12th. Council, can I answer any questions?
I just had one, quick one. How long is that survey up?
It'll be up for a good long time.
Okay. So that's like the survey now?
It is the survey until we amend it.
Excellent. Any other questions? All right, Council, we are moving on. We are on item 9A, received presentation on the unauthorized monthly financial report for the period ending May 31st, 2022. CFO Waldron?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Not a lot of changes to report month over month. The general fund is still going strong, 3.5% over forecast. Sales taxes up 8.5% over our current forecast, 16% over last year. Development fees are approximately 3% over forecast. Same story with impact fees. I have adjusted my projection for that for this year. You'll see it when we get into our budget workshops. And expenses are all running below forecast. Any questions?
Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron? Excellent. Good job. Thank you. All right, Council, we're on the top of page three, citizens' comments. I have two citizens' comments. One, you may see her smile glowing all around. Susan Smith, if you will please come forward and give your name and address. You will have three minutes to share fantastic news with us.
My name is Susan Smith and I-- my address is 1408 Chestnut Street, the Visit Bastrop offices. Before I begin to share some fabulous news, I want to thank two of our board members that are here tonight, Dr. Christy Lee and Carrie Fossler, and two of our staff members that are here, Ashton La Fuente and Christy Hunt are here to share in the good news. So when Visit Bastrop was formed almost five years ago, a deliverable in our contract was to achieve DMAP accreditation. DMAP stands for Destination Marketing Accreditation Program and is a program that's facilitated by Destinations International. They are the mothership internationally for DMO organizations, destination marketing organizations such as Visit Bastrop. So I would like to read a PR press release that will hit the media nationwide tomorrow at 8:00 AM. Bastrop, Texas, June 29th, 2022. Visit Bastrop was awarded with the Destination Marketing Accreditation Program SEAL by Destinations International in recognition of the organization's commitment to industry excellence and meeting the industry standard for performance and accountability of destination organizations around the world. I'm so nervous. Visit Bastrop was awarded accreditation with distinction.
Woo-hoo.
The highest possible recognition for destination organizations. With distinction indicates that the organization far exceeded the minimum requirements for accreditation and that the independent DMAP board found no opportunities for the organization to improve its responses to the required standards. "We are pleased to have Visit Bastrop join our distinguished group of professionals," said Don Welsh, President and CEO of Destinations International. "The industry distinction defines quality and performance standards for destination organizations and I look forward to welcoming them to the DMAP community." The accreditation program requires the destination organization to successfully comply with a multitude of mandatory and voluntary standards that span a variety of areas to gain this monumentous achievement. The standards cover nearly all aspects related to the management and the marketing of destination organizations, including governance, finance, human resources, sales, communications, destination development, and research. Visit Bastrop joins the ranks of over 200 destination organizations who have obtained the DMAP recognition, with less than 10% of those garnering the with distinction status. The Visit Bastrop is-- this is a quote from myself that'll appear in the release. "The Visit Bastrop team is thrilled to have earned this certification and to be a respected leader in the community. By achieving DMAP accreditation with a distinction, Visit Bastrop has demonstrated-- excellence in a wide variety of competencies and strategies that catapult the advancement of our destination. It also communicates to the travel and tourism industry that we have attained a significant measure of excellence, and we're very proud of that."
Congratulations. Yeah, that's awesome. Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And we know that we can't talk about it because it wasn't on the agenda, but we are very happy to get that information. Council, we have Amanda Ashcroft. I don't, is Amanda, are you in the room? She is inviting us to a meeting on July 19th and 20th, and council, you have a, if you don't already have, the city secretary will provide you a copy of her citizens' comments about the meeting. All right, we're going to, on to item 11A, Approval of the Meeting Minutes. Councilmember Kirkland, I believe you have something you'd like to say?
Yes. In the minutes from the last meeting in item 12D, it says that a motion was made by Councilmember Kirkland to take the topic up, which is the food truck vendor permitting fees. Again, with the budget in the meantime, extend existing permits through the budget, and when reading the budget, council would like to know the bottom line cost with options for three, six, and 12-month permits seconded. And then it says a friendly amendment was made by the maker of the motion, Councilmember Kirkland, to suspend invoicing until new fees are adopted. The friendly amendment was accepted by the second of the motion. It was my intention after Mr. City Manager spoke on the topic to, with the friendly amendment, to replace the phrase "extend existing permits through the budget" in the original motion, and I wanted to move that we approve the minutes with that adjustment.
Absolutely. I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett, and I'm doing that quickly because I think you guys have talked and you, we're going to draw through the, we'll make it match what, and the city secretary has that, so we'll just clean those up. Any further discussion or questions? Everybody clear what we're voting on? All right, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The minutes are approved with the revision that Councilmember Kirkland made. All right, we are moving on to items for individual consideration. Our first item is item 12A. We have a number of folks signed up to speak, so we will do those. To the best of my ability, I'll be calling them in the order that they were submitted. Item 12A is Consider Directing the City Manager to Add Juneteenth to the City Holiday Schedule and to amend the Employee Handbook accordingly as requested by Councilmember Cheryl Lee. This was submitted by Tanya Cantrell from the process standpoint, because we're talking about changing things for human resources. Councilmember Lee, do you want to speak about it first, or would you like Ms. Cantrell to go first? There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do want to say a few words about this request. One of the things that I loved most about this year's Juneteenth was the seeing so many different people and different races, different backgrounds comfortably having fun with one another, which is what we want to promote in our community and what we want to begin promoting with Juneteenth. Juneteenth is often referred to as the Black Holiday, and it's not a Black Holiday. I've heard some people approach me as to why would we make Juneteenth a holiday and not Human Rights Day a holiday. And I want to, I want to speak to that point because I want people to understand the significance of Juneteenth and why it's important that it's become a federal holiday and why we should consider making it a city holiday. So I know that this subject was approached earlier in the year, this year, I believe. Time passes so fast, but at that time, in my opinion, that was, it was, it was about another agenda item that had nothing to do with Juneteenth. And so I felt like it wasn't kind of done in the correct manner for the subject to be seriously considered here on the dais. So I want to just kind of talk about the history of Juneteenth a little bit, and then why we, or blacks, consider it Independence Day, and why that consideration of Independence Day for the black community actually merges with July 4th. So I'm going to read it a little bit. "America gained its independence from Britain on July 4th, 1776, and the Declaration of Independence was signed August 2nd, 1776. It contained three basic principles, one of which God made all men equal and gave them the rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. In spite of this statement, slavery persisted. Pennsylvania was the first state to abolish slavery in 1780, adopting a statute that provided for freedom of every slave born in its enactment, followed by New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Rhode Island. By the 1800s, northern states had either abolished slavery completely or they were in the process of eradicating it, and Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation was issued January 1st, 1863. But in Texas, as we know, it wasn't until June 19th, 1865, now known as Juneteenth, that Union soldiers arrived in Galveston and the news, with news that the Civil War had ended and slavery in the US had been abolished. It was in that moment that slaves in Texas gained independence, changing the dynamic of master and slave to employer and hired labor. Two hundred and fifty thousand blacks were freed that day, and that is why it is considered an Independence Day in American history. Texas was the first state to recognize Juneteenth as a state holiday in 1980, and on June 17th, 2021, President Joe Biden signed the holiday into federal law, making it an annual federal holiday. But in spite of that measure, most cities and states have not authorized funding in the budget to allow employees to take the day off and celebrate it. So establishing the holiday as a paid city holiday in Bastrop, it's not going to fix all of the world's problems in terms of race and diversity and inclusion, right? But what it will do is show that our city acknowledges the significance of the day that freed a whole race of people from bondage, and that it's deserving of recognition, that should be commemorated by all Americans because it truly represented that all men are equal in, with the rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. So I wanted to make that point because I've had several people who are in support of Juneteenth just didn't really understand why it should become a paid holiday and what it had to do with independence. So, having this knowledge, I would like for the city of Bastrop to establish Juneteenth, or June 19th, as the, as an annual paid holiday beginning 2023, and direct the city manager to amend the employee handbook, adding Juneteenth to the city holiday schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee, and I so appreciate the conversations that you and I have had about it, and I truly appreciate the way you've embraced being a council member. And she was great. She was like, "I don't want to be messing up the budget," you know? So let's wait till it's passed, let's plan for it, let's do it correctly, and let's add another day. We, so people understand, this is as an employer. We, we, the council are speaking as the employer for our city staff. So that's the recommendation. Very, very much appreciate you bringing it to our attention and asking for it to be on this specific city council agenda. So because it's about our employees, that's why Ms. Cantrell's involved. Is there anything that you need to add, Ms. Cantrell?
No, that was beautifully stated. The only thing that I would add is that we update the person, the employee handbook in September of every year. So at that time, I will update that if y'all choose to go through with this, and then I'll update the employee handbook and provide you with a copy at that time.
Excellent. So, council, before we get a motion, I would like to call the folks that have signed up to speak, and we'll let all of them speak, and then we'll see if there's any other conversation that we can have, and then we'll be entertaining a motion, which I'm thinking is going to be on that side of the dais. All right, the first person that signed up to speak was Michael and Linda Moorcock. Are you here? They would like to speak in favor of this item, which is this item 12A. Karen Sterling, is Karen here? Karen would like to speak, would like to speak in favor of this item. Sarah Rooney? Sarah Rooney would like to speak in favor of this item. Doris Jean Williams? Doris Jean Williams would like to, is in favor of this item. Steve Chamberlain. Mr. Chamberlain, if you would please come forward and state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak. Mr. Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Steve Chamberlain, 230 Oak Forest Drive, Cedar Creek, Texas. I am the past county chair for the Bastrop County Democrat Party and am now legislative liaison, Legislative Committee Chair, and that's why I'm speaking for the citizens of all of Bastrop County and Bastrop. I think Councilman Lee laid it out very good. That was kind of saying a lot of things I said. We all are going to be celebrating July 4th. That is Independence. But, I mean, if history serves me right, I am old back when, when in Texas we taught history and what it really meant, and the citizens that established the United States, they were free from the government rule in, on June 19th. That's when the citizens got real freedom from slavery. They were enslaved. We celebrate July 4th as one of the major holidays in the United States, and that's because we left England, our forefathers left England, and broke away from, you know, the government rule. June 19th is breaking away from enslaved citizens, people being enslaved and being told ownership, like you own a dog. So anyway, I am obviously for this resolution or this, making this a holiday, and just want to thank you for your time and consideration for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain. Cynthia Meyer?
If you'll state your name and address, you'll have three minutes. Absolutely. Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Cynthia Meyer. I am a lifelong resident of Bastrop. I live, own property, and operate a business in the city of Bastrop also. And I'm speaking in favor of making Juneteenth a city holiday. As Councilmember Lee said earlier, it is a federal holiday. It was made that last year. Texas was the first state to make it a state holiday in 1980. Also, the city of Smithville was recognized for its bold leadership in making it a city holiday. Elgin, the city council, voted unanimously to make it a city holiday. For the city of Bastrop currently to offer a floating holiday as an alternative instead of Juneteenth as a holiday, to me diminishes the importance and historic relevance of Juneteenth. Making it a city holiday would state boldly Bastrop's values and its character. It signals Bastrop respects and values all of its citizens, all of its employees. At times, we are given opportunities to do what is right. And to quote the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "The time is always right to do what is right." I urge the council to take tonight's opportunity to do what is right and make Juneteenth a Bastrop city holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Johnny Sanders? If you'd state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Johnny Sanders, 156 Spring Branch, representing Johnny Sanders, 156 Spring Branch. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm not going to take long. It's time to quit floating, and it's time to make it a holiday. And I'll tell you something. I've known Lee family all my life, and that young lady over there, don't want to mess with her. So I'm totally in favor of making it a holiday, and I know you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Ms. Cantrell, just for clarification, so everyone knows, yes, the floating holiday was added by council last year, but this would be in addition, and the floating holiday would still be there, is the intention that Councilmember Lee and I discussed.
Absolutely. I was, that was very important to me, to not take away a floating holiday for someone who might want to enjoy that day doing something else other than Juneteenth and establishing it as a separate holiday.
Correct. So, council, unless you have any questions, I believe Councilmember Lee has a motion. Any other comments, Councilmember Kirkland? No? Oh, I think they're getting ready to vote. Councilmember Lee, would you like to give us a motion?
I move to establish Juneteenth as an annual paid holiday beginning 2023, and direct the city manager to amend the employee handbook, adding Juneteenth to the city holiday schedule.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Kirkland. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously, and I think that deserves a round of applause. And speaking of our employees, Ms. Cantrell doesn't have to spend the night with us if I pull forward item 12H, so I'm going to pull forward item 12H. We're on the last page, on page 5. 12H, Consider Action to Approve a Recommendation to Increase Salaries for Staff in the Streets and Drainage, Parks, and Building Maintenance Divisions of Public Works. Ms. Cantrell?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. If you'll recall, in February of this year, council approved a similar increase for our salaries and our water wastewater for the distribution and our plant operations staff, as well as the patrol division and our police department. And this was in an effort to recruit and retain the talent we had because we found that we were behind market at that time. So today, we're here to discuss our public works staff, which I lovingly refer to them as the other first responders, and I want to acknowledge that we have a couple of public works guys here tonight, like Broch has our senior equipment operator. So it's wonderful to have them, and what I mean by calling them, oh, my three motor trucks, shucks. So what I, when I, when I referring, lovingly refer to them as the other first responders, these are the guys that get the streets ready for our police and our fire to get to the citizens when they need help. So these guys were in our senior center during the snow apocalypse. When it floods, they were there for the whole week, away from their families, working a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week shift to get us through those tumultuous times. But just, so that's why we call them that, but they're great. But I want to give you a little background on what these guys and girls do to ensure the safety of our citizens. So in our Streets and Drainage Division, they're funded to have, these are the boots-on-the-ground guys, so not our public works director like Hancock's not included in these numbers, six equipment operators, four maintenance workers, and one crew leader. And to ensure the public safety in this particular division, they maintain over 60 miles of paved streets, 50 miles of open drainage ditches, 78 miles of storm sewers, 1,450 street signs and counting, 98,562 linear feet of sidewalks and counting, and mowing about 26 miles of right-of-way. So that's in our Streets and Drainage Division. In our Parks Division, they're funded to have seven employees, and they care for the city's 11 parks. They maintain all the park facilities, the trails, the playgrounds, the park amenities, including the splash park, the disc golf, the rodeo arena, the trees and irrigation for all city properties, the Fairview Cemetery, and last but not least, they also take care of Highway 71, the corridor along Highway 71. And then our Building and Maintenance Division of Public Works is, has one crew leader and four custodial staff, and they maintain nine city buildings. So with that being said, and with our current robust job market, the rising inflation, and the fact that these divisions have had a turnover rate of 64% since June of last year, yeah, human resources, of course, had to go to the market. We looked at several cities. I talked to all the HR directors for the city of Taylor, Kyle, BK, Flugerville, Georgetown, Cedar Park, and Buta, just to name a few, and they're all having these same conversations. They can't get these positions filled because they too are below market. And there's, there's a couple of different reasons for that. As listed in the staff report that you received, some of the current, most current competitors that I listed in there are who are losing them to. Bastrop County, their starting salary for a maintenance worker is 1738. For an equipment operator, it's 1979. And for a senior operator, it's $20, and- And for a senior operator, it's $20.82. And so, going to Kyle, I had a long conversation with their director. Their, their maintenance worker pay schedules were in line with ours with the 1443, but they have moved that to 18 now. City of Buta, no experience, $17 on a maintenance worker, three years, 1850, and seven years, 2025. They just made those changes as well. And then SSE Services, we looked at them for education. That's actually BISDs. They can't do all the contract maintenance work for all the campuses for BISD, and their general maintenance worker with experience, they're starting them out at $18 an hour, and Elgin is doing the same with 19. So that, and there's also another regulation that went into effect, the high demand for these equipment operators and things, is there's new licensing regulations that came out in February from the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration for CDL holders. So where it used to be, they studied, they took a test, you know, it was probably around $150 for the test, Curtis Hancock. But now that's, that's reached up to 3,000 to 6,800, and they're in class for a week. So they're away from the job for a week, so those regulations have gone up high. We have 10 staff members that have their CDLs. We want to keep those guys. So recommendation for salary increases, maintenance workers would go from 1443 to 1717 an hour. Our equipment operators would go from 1590 to 1893. And our senior equipment operators would go from 1669 to 2037. And in an effort to maintain our experienced staff, remain competitive in the market, minimize salary compression, and maintain our internal equity, we also need to raise the salaries for our parks, visions, maintenance workers, and equipment operators, as well as our custodial staff. So the estimated cost for all of this, for the rest of this fiscal year is $43,000, but there's no impact to the budget because we have salary savings due to vacancies. And for the impact on fiscal year 23 budget would be approximately $188,000. And I'll take any questions you have at this time.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
I don't have any questions. I would like to move to approve. If not, I could double it.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers and a second from Councilmember Lee. Is there any discussion or questions? That's, we have to be competitive. I mean, and thank you for the thorough information that you put in the staff report that makes it public information, everyone can have access to it, and I know it's beneficial to Council. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. I'm sure they, they thank us for us trying to stay competitive. All right, Council, we're back on Page 3. We're on Item 12B. Hold a public hearing on the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District Ongoing Service Plan and Proposed Assessment Levy. Consider any objections to the proposed assessments and consider action to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 2022-17 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the 2022 service plan update and provisions related to the assessment for the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, approving a fiscal year 2023 assessment role for the district, and containing other provisions related to Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District and Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation, providing for an effective date, and move to include on the July 12, 2022 City Council Meeting for a second reading. Ms. Waldron?
Yes. Good evening, again. This is annual process. This, this annual review of our service and assessment plan for our public improvement district is required by Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 372. And we do have a consultant that works with us that keeps us in compliance with these guidelines, and so I'm going to let John Snyder go ahead and update you on the report. He's with P3.
Hi, Mayor, Council. John Snyder with P3 Works. As Tracy said, this is just the annual update to the service and assessment plan. So in 2019, y'all did a big amended and restated service and assessment plan. This is really just the update to that. So we haven't adjusted any assessments for anybody. It's simply what's, we have to put in here the new assessment role, which is going to be what's going on the tax bill for next year. So that's, that's the bulk of this document. You may notice it's quite a bit thicker than what it's been in previous years. There was House Bill 1543 went into effect September 1st, and it requires a disclosure for every property. And so for every single property now, you can go in here and find the disclosure of what your pit assessment is and what the annual installment schedule looks like. And then the last piece I wanted to bring up is that the House Bill 1543 also requires this to be recorded in the property records within seven days. So I think this requires a second reading, so I guess it'd be within seven days of that second reading. We do need to get it recorded. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And Council, you guys know that Mayor Pro Tem Rogers serves on the Hunter's Crossing Board. Is there anything that you would like to add?
No, I think the Board works really hard to fix everything and just to remind the public that this only affects the Hunter's Crossing people, not all the citizens. But I think we did a great job, and he, his report is very thorough. You didn't read all 100,000 pages.
And the Board passed that?
Yes, ma'am. Passed it unanimously.
All right. We need to hold a public hearing, so I am officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak for the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
I'm officially closing the public hearing.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we do have...
We have a citizen signed up to speak, Lyle Nelson, who serves on the Board, but it says only if there's any questions from Council. Mr. Nelson, would you like to speak? I guess that's a yes.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of Council, city manager. My name's Lyle Nelson, 209 North Hunting Lodge Lane. Y'all read your 143-page packet. John has laid it all out for you, and for the sake of brevity and to endear myself to this Council, I'll withhold my comments except to answer questions.
We're done.
Wait, I had, I had one question for Lyle.
Oh, okay, sorry. Councilmember Crouch?
Sorry, Lyle, you can't get off that easy. I just, there was a line item in here for the contingency, and what is that contingency used for? Is it something specific, or is it just a general contingency?
It's a general contingency. Should there be an occurrence, a strong wind blow a section of the fence down, say the drainage ponds suddenly collapse and what else? So we have to have a contingency plan of some way, shape, or form. Good.
Any other questions, Council? All right. So the public hearing is closed, and I am happy to entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. We are moving on to the top of Page 4, Item 12C. Consider action to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 2022-15 of the City Council of Bastrop, Texas, approving the Burleson Crossing East zoning concept scheme, changing the zoning for 12.95 acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey, Abstract 98, from P2 rule to P5 core, and establishing warrants on 19.81 acres located east of Edward Burleson Lane and north of State Highway 71 within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibits A, B, and C, providing for findings of fact, adoption, repealer, severability, and enforcement, proper notice and meeting, and establishing an effective date missed bills.
Good evening. So just to kind of recap where we are, we're on the second reading of the Burleson Crossing East zone request, going, starting with the first public meeting we had on this was back on March 31st with the planning, I think that date's wrong, but the last meeting in March for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, where P&amp;Z held a public hearing and considered the request, and their recommendation by a vote of 5 to 2 was for denial. Then we brought the item forward to Council on May 24th with a list of warrants as had been submitted by the applicant and has, had been reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The public hearing and first reading were approved at that meeting. We came back on June 14th for the second reading, and at that meeting, the applicant had provided a new, an updated revised list of warrants at that meeting. There were also, there was also some questions from Council on what, what was the concept plan, and was that going to be attached to the ordinance? So starting in that meeting, with that, the direction of that meeting, to work off of the list of warrants as provided by the applicant from that meeting, and to include the concept plan in the ordinance, that's where staff started after the June 14th Council meeting. So that brings us to today. So we worked all last week with the applicant on versions of the ordinance and the list of warrants. And so what we have before you tonight are two different versions of the ordinance and two different versions of the list of warrants. The first, the first version of both is the staff-provided version. So with this, we, staff and legal wrote our version of the ordinance language. We sent it to the applicant. They provided some markups, and so that's what we provided in your staff report, is the list, which is, they're pretty minor, just two changes in the language, specifically in Section 2 of the ordinance. One of the instructions from Council was to go back and add the concept plan back in with some specification that this was to be a retail shopping center, as had been presented, with the language that we provided on what, what retail was to entail, and more specifically what retail didn't entail, which we included outdoor storage, automotive sales and service, warehousing, mini-storage, call centers, and multifamily. Those weren't in keeping with what had been shown on the conceptual site plan. You can see on the right side of the screen is the language in red is what the applicant provided changes on. One, for the concept plan, that it would be a retail shopping center with a hotel, which doesn't strictly fall into the definitions of a retail center. And then added some clarification on that outdoor storage could be used as an accessory use, that automotive services would be allowed, and then accessory use for warehousing for the retail uses. So we wanted to bring those to your attention, and when we get to the voting part, we will have options for ordinance version 1, ordinance version 2, or Council can provide direction of picking and choosing which language they would like us to include. We also just wanted to point out, because we had a misunderstanding at the staff level too of the, what was in the conceptual site plans. The concept site plan that was provided in your packet on May 24th showed the eastern road slash driveway going all the way through and having a driveway out on the Blakely Lane. The conceptual site plan that's included with the ordinance does not have that connection. And just to point out, there's the other changes, they did show a walkway. It doesn't provide definition, but shows a walkway provided between the parking rows on there. So there are some minor differences in what was presented in the packet on the 24th and what's attached to the ordinance tonight, just to be clear on what we're, what y'all want to approve tonight. On the list of warrants, the first version is staff's, staff's version, and then the right-hand column is the applicant's requested language. So you'll see the language in red is what staff is recommending we add, and then what is the applicant was requesting is on the right-hand side. So for the first one, and there's only, I think, I want to say there were seven different warrants on the entire list, that we still had some outstanding clarification on. So the first one was the applicant is requesting that the block perimeters and the block layout for the development just doesn't apply at all to the, to the plan. What we were requesting is that they still use private driveways to define that 330-block grid internally to the, the site with private drives, not necessarily city streets. And then as shown on the concept site plan. The second one is for the connectivity throughout the development for pedestrians. We wanted clarity on that the six-foot, they, they had sidewalks slash walkways. We don't have a standard in our code for walkways. We do have a standard in our code for sidewalks. So we thought it would be clearer that it would be a six-foot designated sidewalk. It would be clearly, clearly defined sidewalk that would be throughout the property. The, on required frontage, so this, this code section, we require buildings to take up a certain percentage of the width of the lot. That's to provide continuous, you know, walkable street front. It provides, in the architectural world, they kind of call it rhythm, that you expect, you know, there to be another building every, you know, 100 feet. You don't have large swaths of vacant area you're walking by. It's, it's less comfortable for a pedestrian. And with that, in the B3 codes, we don't have a minimum lot size, because if you have to have a building up at the front of the lot, you're going to end up with a lot that still has the availability to be built on. Since we're not, since they're asking for warrants to not have to meet those requirements, what we were requesting to meet the, that intent of the code was to have 120-foot wide lot standards. So you have to have a, a lot that's at least 120 feet wide. And we said have public street frontage. In our code, we require all platted lots to have frontage on a public street. They added the words, or they were requesting public or private streets, and our concern with this is there are no defined pub-private streets in this development. There is nothing in this plan that calls for a private street. So trying to implement that at a later stage could be potentially confusing. The next one was on concerning road widths for the dedication of the right-of-way. The only one we had issue with was on future dedication for Edward Burleson Road. That road in our master transportation plan is shown as an 80-foot right-of-way, which was why it was originally platted with 60 feet with a 10-foot reservation on the west side. And so the intent would be to also have 10 feet on the east side to make that right-of-way ultimately 80 feet. Then the, these two kind of repeat, or the next one repeats of the first one because it's in our B3 code and in our technical manual. So this is about the 330 grid and the defining the blocks with private drives. For the next one, this was a request that wasn't in the previous versions that we didn't have time to look at until after the, at the June 14th meeting. The, the public street, public frontage diagram is, is an example of what, how you're supposed to lay out the streets. We think it still applies, and we'll just apply the different warrants that are already in there to, to how that public street frontage works, and that plan will still have to come in with meeting the, the design guidelines that are approved in the warrants. So we're requesting to remove it as one of the warrants in the list. So options for tonight, you've got probably lots of them, but as we kind of see the easy path, you could approve the version 1 of the ordinance and version 1 of the Exhibit B, which is the staff-presented ordinance. You've got version 2 of, or the ordinance and Exhibit B, that's the applicant's version that you could approve. You could approve a combination between the two and pick and choose of the red highlighted language. You could go back to the original staff recommendation that we presented on the 24th, or you could deny the request. Those are all options, and there's maybe other ones in there for those. And then just to kind of remind, these were the warrants that staff had either partially been on board with or partially approved at the zoning concept scheme on the 24th from the original packet. So any questions? The applicant is here.
I think she was first. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Well, I just had a basically, going back just a little bit, you were saying that very last warrant, go back to the, the very bottom one, that one wasn't on the original request? So it was a new thing he added?
Yes.
Okay. So it wasn't part of the first reading that we approved?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Plunkett? Councilmember Crouch, we really need to wait till you're recognized and on the mic. Councilmember Plunkett?
First of all, I just wanted to thank you for doing it this way. This is very much, you know, what we need to see the differences, and so we can try to figure out how to resolve it. Thank you for that. And I, I mean, I think it would be useful to just, if each side just spoke to, I mean, that's not a whole... I mean, that's not a whole lot. If each side spoke to the issue that causes them to either want it or not want it in there, or to, you know, what the difference is, so that we can, I think we could probably knock out every one of them fairly quickly, I would think. That be okay with?
Absolutely. Counsel said, all right, so we'll ask the applicant to come and speak on, because council, councilmember Bills, you, you, you don't want that job. You've said what you wanted on, is there anything else that you want to add on those warrants?
The only one that I kind of forgot to add was about why we were recommending against automotive services as a use is one of the things that is an automotive service is a Jiffy Lube or a Firestone, some kind of automotive shop, that in this code and our previous codes, we had regulations for how they were pointed. So because how you face the bays does impact noise and does impact how the street front looks. So tip, if you actually look at most of ours in town, they face sideways, they don't face the road. So that's, since we don't have anything in the, with all the warrants, anything about building orientation, that's, that was our concern.
That's your concern? All right. Because, and this is the whole, people are used to use code and we're a form-based code and sometimes you lose things if you swap over. Okay, all right. Mr. Derm, if you'll state your name?
Steve Dermon. I live at one, three, two, two, zero, Kerrville, Folkway in Austin. First time. Thank you for having me, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, city manager. Learn from that gentleman back there. All right, I'll just go through them quickly because you're right, we spent-
Please get close to the mic or they can't hear you at home.
We spent a lot of time last week. I was traveling a lot of it, but we, we got through a lot of this. What I, what I added was a hotel. And when we initially came in, we had a hotel, we had a hotel that wanted to go on-site. We're not really looking to do a hotel. We have done that in the past with some of our larger sites. We put them in the back. And so all I'm saying is I just, I think people wanted a hotel. I didn't have any opposition when we were talking with staff about that. So I just added, said, well, do we want to bring that back potentially at some point? But it would be back behind buildings if we don't get the big, big, big anchor, but we get medium-sized to decent-sized anchors, a couple acres in the back, in the back corner could end up being a hotel and servicing the community. If that's, that, that's my point. That's it on that one. As far as outdoor storage accessory use, that is basically almost five or six of the tenants on the other side. Lowe's has accessory uses, Academy does. TJ Maxx puts out sidewalk sales and, and they put their storage containers, things out there. Alta has a storage in the back that they keep and they do it for their big runs. They bring in extra merchandise at Christmas time in some of the other areas. So that's what those are for. As far as automotive sales and services, I agree totally with orientation. We, we won't be able to do that. Our anchors won't let us anyway. This was more put in, in case we end up with a Costco there. Or one of these guys that have these automotive services, is I can't tell these anchors they can't do it. You know, they do tires or whatever on it, a Sams. That's what it's generally for. Target, Target changes things and adds that as a, as a deal. I don't think Kohl's is going to get there, but you know, that's, that's what it was for. I'm not looking to put Autozone on those guys in there. Jiffy Lube, they're not going to let me do that. If you look at our REA from Lowe's, they're not letting me do that type of automotive for the same reasons and because they have parked cars in their parking lot.
Do you have a suggestion to address the concern for the orientation?
I don't mind saying automotive sales and services for large retail or anchor retail tenants, something that, that regard, because that's all it's really shaped up for that I want to do. That's all that I'm going to get to do.
So, but I think we're excluding, not including. So I think what you would probably want to say is something like standalone automotive service?
Yes.
Would that, would that work for you, Jennifer?
Automotive service as an accessory use, because that means the overall use has to be something else and it has to be a small, accessory use is not the main use of the building, yeah.
Okay, so, so it would be except as an accessory, because it's an exception. So we want to allow the accessory use and disallow the standalone. So it would be, yeah, just, I guess, except as a, we could add three except as accessory uses in the whole thing.
Because some of, some of these guys may sell some of the products in there and-
Okay, let's keep, we got a lot to cover, so.
All right, I'm sure. All right, on the, on the concept plan, we just added the latest. And the problem we have with the driveway in the back, if I'm doing this right, I'm not. Okay, the back driveway. The change that we did was, as you can see where settlement comes out, that's like forty-seven feet from the corner of where that driveway would be. And when we looked at that driveway all the way across and we realized that, that's putting two settlement, Blakely will get extended to it at least and hopefully further. And our driveway cut real close. And we typically, and like a text out standards, a minimum is two hundred feet. Sometimes if it's high traffic, they want it four hundred feet. So there is actually a driveway cut further back. This is an area where we want to bring trucks in. So you're talking about trucks coming in and out for these, for these big users. That's why we made that change. That's the only reason we made that change. You don't want to put it that close to the other draw, to settlements already there. And then Jennifer's correct, we added, we were trying to add connectivity because before we had a note on that old plan that just said we'd figure it out. And this one is showing how we figured out to go from building to building. That's why we changed that concept plan. All right?
That blue circle with the sidewalk, so that's a full-fledged sidewalk? That's not paint on asphalt?
It's both.
Got to get close to the mic.
Okay. It, it's, it's a combination of both. That's why, we'll get to that in the warrants. I'll explain sidewalks, walkways. But you have pedestrian crossing and markings at, at intersections and things like that. And you don't want to put, see, that's, that's in between a median, so that would be a sidewalk. We have a parking and you have a median. That's what, if you blow that up, that's what it looks like. But we're also going to cross driveways and you don't really put sidewalks as we think of them, concrete six-foot wide-
I got you.
-through it. So that's why we use the term walkway, because that's more of a, the dots with the pedestrian crossing. And that's what's a combination of it. That's a perfect example. And I, I, I understand, maybe you don't have it in your code, but that's what it's for.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Crouch?
Is it cross-hatched, cross-hatched and marked?
Excuse me?
Is it cross-hatched and marked?
Yes, yeah, that's what you do.
So when we're looking at that plan, the end caps are all raised curbs on both ends of the parking islands, or parking aisles?
Yes, and it's curved, yes. And then down the center, the medians too, all the way down. It's, you're not just driving through-
Okay.
-different, different places on that section. That is going to be curved with a sidewalk down the middle of it. So it's a total connection. People will walk down it, it'll be marked.
One more, one more question. And it's also cross-hatched to the building from the parking lane? And then at the right side, from the smaller tenant to the sidewalk-
Correct.
-on that middle street? So there's cross-hatching all the way across that parking lot to designate a walkway?
Correct. It's, it's concrete around that small building and then it, it'll, it'll juke out and when you go across the driveway and it'll be marked as a pedestrian-
It will what out? I'm just teasing.
That's just me. And then it'll go over to the sidewalk that's along, along wagon wheel. All right, on the first one, I'm, I'm okay with the change. We were, my attorney was trying to clarify that that doesn't have a lot to do with the maximum perimeter length or thirteen, twenty. But if it gives a designation for the, how it works, that's fine with us. The only thing I, I, I want to suggest is we say allow up to thirty feet on the, on these, I gotta get my glasses on. Up to thirty feet wide private drives as shown on that site plan. That's, means all is internal drives. And because it might, there might be one that's twenty-nine or twenty-eight and I don't want to come back and ask for a change in the warrant. If we got to fit things in to get it right. Thirty feet is our normal deal, what we, what we do for the fire and the ambulances and all the emergency vehicles. That's what we try to use.
What would your minimum be?
I don't really want to go under twenty-five or twenty-seven. I really don't. You got bastards full of pickup trucks and they got to get around.
I understand, but when, if staff's reviewing a warrant and it says up to thirty, one would pass. So that's why I'm trying to set some boundaries that's acceptable.
I'm, I'm fine with that boundary.
So twenty-seven to thirty?
Yes.
Is what you're asking for?
That's what I'm asking for. I added the word internal drives. I, I, I think we just leave it alone. It already says public, private drives. On the next one, I, I explained why we are asking for the words walkways, because it's just technical, well, I know it's not in your code, but it's technically not corrected. If people think of sidewalks a certain way, we will cross with pedestrian crossings. So that's the only reason I've added that, so you guys can make up your mind. The reason I have the word private in there is for only one thing. And that is because some of our lots are going to go to wagon wheel. And there was a lot of talk at one time with staff that that would be, we're building a fifty-five foot wide drive. It's almost exactly like Burleson across the way. We're putting a sidewalk down it, we're putting trees down there. But it's private and we, we maintain it. And even though we're attaching from wagon wheel to wagon wheel, or from Blake Burleson to wagon wheel, if you guys are saying it's a public street and are eventually going to accept it and maintain it, then I'm okay with the language saying only public streets. I added some language, if you don't, if it doesn't, that where we say, we're jumping around, seven point three, okay. Where's the word public? I, I had some language stating that it, if wagon wheel, oh, here it is. I added a sentence on the end. You could say exactly what Jennifer has, except add, for the purposes of this section, wagon wheel shall be considered a public street. If you guys are okay with that, then I don't need the word private. And then however it ends up, that's fine. Okay, the next one is about, this is about right-of-way. And this is more semantics again. What it states is, we don't have an issue with the width of wagon wheel. We don't have an issue with the, with the Blakely. We want to state that Edward Burleson was platted with a ten-foot right-of-way reserve on the west side or opposite side. An additional right-of-way shall be required for SH seventy-one or Edward Burleson. And this should be, what we're saying is this should be figured out at plating, not zoning. Because that's when you, that, that's when you dedicate roads and that's when you dedicate right-of-way.
There's a lot of things on this list that we generally don't do during the zoning.
I, I understand. And so that's all, that's my point. My point is, I know there's going to have to be ten feet dedicated at some point for that widening of Burleson. But we haven't determined how all the roads are going to shape and how far they go and, and we haven't figured out Blakely.
But Burleson needs to be eighty feet. Do you, do you have any issues with that?
I don't, except for at some point, I want to get credit for that ten feet. And because we're, you're going to be asking me for a bunch of money for roads that are going to extend further than, than just Burleson. And, and that's fine. I just want to make sure it's all in the mix when we get to the plating. And that was my only reasoning. It's just not normally done at this time. You guys will get your chance to have lots of conversations about it.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
If he doesn't want it done this time, can we just take that out for it to be brought back whenever the appropriate time?
That's what I wrote. I, I wrote-
I mean, that's kind of what the, that's kind of what the staff wanted, was to approve some of these things later.
It says, or Edward Burleson Road shall be dedicated at time of plating, or otherwise required.
No, I was just meaning remove that whole warrant.
Excuse me?
I was just meaning removing that whole warrant and have it come back at the appropriate time.
You're, we're just trying to meet your, adding the right-of-way in your section.
I was just asking, can I remove that warrant and bring it back at the appropriate time is what my question is.
She's saying, if you think it's at the wrong time, then why are we considering the warrant at this time?
Because your zoning code says that you have to deal with it now. And I'm saying that it'd be better to do all this when we do the plating.
Jennifer, is that right?
No, that's, that's been our contention, is a lot of these needed, the warrants can come in at any point in the process. So that was our, since there was so many things up in the air that they needed to come in on either public improvement plan or site development plan stages.
So this particular warrant could be removed from this and brought back at another time?
Yes.
See?
I'm fine, but-
I'm just asking. I'm just thinking if it's, it sounds like it'd be easier for you.
I'm fine with it then, Drusila. I just, you guys remember when I come back, it's going to, it's going to come up soon because I'm going to go in plating next.
Okay, that's fine. You were just saying it would be easier for you. So I'm just saying if it's easier for you.
That, that's fine. The next one is again, like the first one, it just, it just needs to add what, Connie, what you wrote in that first one.
Twenty-seven to thirty?
Yeah, twenty-seven to thirty.
I, I don't know, oh, Fire Chief happens to still be here. Is twenty-seven feet wide enough for you?
And then the, we added back the diagram, two-point-three-point-zero-zero-three, the diagram, one public forum diagram. And the reason being is-
Public frontage, I think, not forum.
Public frontage, is because it was confusing us, is this how we have to build all the roads? And remember, we've already agreed in warrants that we would take the trees and go three trees every hundred. Well, that diagram shows them every thirty. It shows ten-foot wide sidewalks. It shows a bunch of things. So we just removed it because it, it related to the other sections and it was missed. It was missed by me and it was missed by my staff and it was missed by everybody. However, after talking to Cheryl today, I, I am fine in adding the words, going back to the, leaving it as it is, saying diagram, one public frontage diagram, and then adding the warrant as three trees with, within every hundred linear feet of roads, driveways, frontage shall be required and shall be a minimum of two caliber and procured by a qualified wholesale nursery. That's the one we use.
Who determines a qualified wholesale nursery?
We tried to say licensed and we tried to say registered. This is the language that they come up, we came up with. I have to pay for it. I have to buy them. And my landscape company has to go get them. They need to be a good brand. But I don't mind saying registered or licensed, however you want to do it.
I just didn't know if we're putting it down, would anybody know? Assistant Sayem, Mayor Joe?
We asked that same question because it's just hard to define. And that's really about what most of these are about. And I just, I think it's important to point something out. I believe Mr. Dermon, correct me if I'm wrong, is referencing another document that was sent at four-thirty today.
Yes.
Not, not this one.
Correct.
Almost in your packet. There was another version today that he's discussing.
Drusila? Yes, Drusila, I want to try to add it all back after our meeting by the deal. I, I'm not trying to change it again. I put everything back the way it was and then I, we had these five, six hour deals changing. And instead of trying to say, we want our point of view and you want your point of view, I tried to find a common ground with the last pieces of the, of the, of the puzzle. That's all it is. So I don't want to confuse the people again.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
The diagram one point one, is that the map? Is that this?
Nope, that's a zoning concept scheme.
I'll show you, I have it. It's this.
The hell is that? Oh, it's a diagram of the trees, okay.
That's, that's what it is. That's what I was trying to correct. Is anyone else want to look at it?
But again, that wasn't in the first reading at all, right?
It was not. It was not.
So can I go back and make sure I understand what you guys are talking about?
Absolutely. You have the floor.
Okay, so on the very first warrant, he's okay to add the twenty-seven to thirty, that five-point-two-point-zero-zero-two-B, I guess, right? And I'm not understanding why we, you don't, I'm sure people can- And I'm not understanding why we, you don't, I'm sure people can understand the difference between the walk, walkways and sidewalks. Why do we have, why are you?
Well, in our, in the shopping center lingo, it's not. It's not considered, your sidewalks, there are certain things about it that are thought and mined. And I don't want to get into confusion, so that's why I did it. But, um, it's, well, you, you can feel it different when you drive across it. If you put a sidewalk, they, maintaining it is much more difficult. And the pedestrian crossings are what people stop for. And sidewalks, unless we put pedestrian crossing markings on top of the sidewalk. I was trying to do it for safety more than anything. That, that, because you're going to go from a concrete sidewalk and then you're going to walk across an intersection, then you're going to go back on a sidewalk. And so in between that.
Just markings, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I've, I've never driven over a sidewalk, just so you know.
Exactly. It isn't, that's why we don't put it in.
I think most people know what a sidewalk is compared with just markings. But that's just me and my basic knowledge.
Do you want to say walkways with markings?
Oh, don't get me to start putting the words. And then on 6.5, you're now okay with them taking out the private part? Is that correct?
If we add.
If we add, it'd be a city street?
Well, this is only about wagon wheel.
No, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to make sure I'm, I got it right.
I, I want to add the language, "For purposes of this section wagon wheel shall be considered a public street." Everybody, everywhere else we'll touch, and we do, and we touch on some platter lots on wagon wheel. And if it becomes and we turn it over to cities or city street because it's built.
Well, you're talking about 7.3.
Yeah, she's the one ahead of you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 6.5, what was your, what did you do?
I don't think he ever addressed it.
I thought, no wonder I got lost.
No, I, I was trying to say I wanted to add the language to clarify. Instead of just taking out the word private, which I understand they're confused, that, that they, they don't want that in there because it could mean other driveways. I want, I wasn't doing it for that reason. I was doing it only because wagon wheel was discussed at certain points in our discussions over the several.
Let's just talk about building.
You, you have to, 120 feet, you have to have 120 feet to a ri, uh, I have no problem with that. I just want to make sure wagon wheel can be used as a public street. Even though we might build it privately, we've agreed to do that and we, to your dimensions.
Oh, see, I, I understand what you're saying. You're just trying to use wagon wheel as a.
Frontage.
On the frontage for the frontage part of it, not to actually make it a public street.
So let's ask, if you don't mind, Mayor Pro Tim Rogers, let's ask Ms. Bills because I think, I think what he's trying to accomplish is not necessarily what she's trying to accomplish.
So we always understood, because when we were talking about the right-of-way width for wagon wheel, that wagon wheel is already an existing city street. We always intended wagon wheel to be a public street, that the city would maintain.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm the one above that.
The one, where are you?
6.5.003, where you've stroke, struck out private.
Yes, and so that's, and that's, I think, the confusion here is, is that the, Steve was thinking that the, um, that wagon wheel was a private street. Our understanding was always it was going to be a public street.
I'm okay with that. I want it to be a public street, but there was a target.
You need to be in front of a microphone if you're speaking.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with wagon wheel being a public street.
Is the city fine with it being a public street?
Yeah, it is.
We always intended it to be a public street because the part of wagon wheel, flip back real fast. Right there, that is already a publicly dedicated and maintained street. So that was going to continue through to, to make that connection. So that was always the intention of staff, so.
We won't have, we have no problem with the language that her language.
Okay, so you're okay with their language on that one? And then 7.3, you're okay with taking that one totally out and coming back to it at a certain time? At the correct time? Is that correct?
Well, can we state that?
She just did.
Remove 7.3?
Can we just state to be done during plating?
And that the, is that when it's supposed to happen?
It doesn't, it says you're, I'm approving this in zoning, that we're giving this right-of-way.
But Jennifer just said that's when it normally comes. Am I confused?
Sorry, what's the question?
On the 7.3, if I remove that, when does it come back?
For Edward, Edward Burleson?
During plating?
During plating. So what this is saying is, is that there would be no future right-of-way dedication for Edward Burleson. We're saying that we still may need that in the future. And that does come in during the plating, so.
And we're, we're re, reconfirming that it's always intended to be an 80-foot right-of-way?
Yes, and so that was why we were taking out Edward Burleson. Like, we're agreeing that, yeah, Blakie lands 80, that wagon wheel can be 55.5, that we still, you know, will decide at, you know, at plating, the maximum it's ever going to be is 80 feet, so.
Again, I'm not disputing it, but we just don't normally do it at zoning.
What did you just say?
We don't, we don't normally do dedication of right-of-way and state it in zoning. We do it at plating.
That's what Jennifer just said.
Yeah, exactly.
Which is back to removing it as a warrant.
I, I'll wait for it. I'm just saying, I'll be back.
Okay, I'm fine. I just want to make sure.
And I have no problem with it.
I'm just trying to clear this up as much as I can with you. And then my next. Well, I know, but we'll have a resolution. And then the last one, the 7.4, you're okay with it going from 30 to 27, correct?
27 to 30, right.
27 to 30.
Yes. And then there's 2.3, if you want that diagram, if you want me to put in the language that we discussed this morning.
So I just want to make sure I have my notes right, that all the, okay, thank you.
All right.
So how can we get all that in the resolution?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure where, where we are. And I don't know if we're at version one, version two, and I don't even know what to call version 430.
Well, you guys are going to be at three, where we agree with some changes to language on the ordinance and the.
So we just need to go back, sorry.
Mayor, okay, Councilmember Crouch?
Well, I was just trying to do the same thing everybody else is trying to do up here, I think, is trying to figure out which version. Because we've got a combo deal with all of these, it looks like. So would it make sense just to walk back through and say which, what the language is going to be on each one of those? So we can get it straight and documented and written down properly? I know Drusilla wrote it down. I wrote my notes down, but.
I, I think it would be best if we went forward to this. We started with, on the, on the, that's, that's your version, correct? Okay. And that version is fine if we add this, those five or six issues we discussed and what we determined.
Let me get back to the right version. Yeah, this, this is the current. You have, my version's on the left-hand side. Their version as of Friday was on the right-hand side.
But we just made a bunch of mistakes.
She's saying this is the basis and then we add the changes to.
Sounds like you're taking some of the red language, but then also adding other language that's not on either column, so.
All right, so instead of going through it for a second time, like, can we have a, a more, like, more general conversation on, um, are there any other concerns that haven't been specifically listed on exhibit B, these seven items that we're talking about? For example, Council, are you okay with adding the hotel in general? Is that an acceptable thing? Anybody have an issue with adding the hotel?
No.
Okay. We also have someone signed up to speak, but Council, I want to give you an opportunity to go first. I, uh, I had had the question to sidewalk versus walkways. I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Rogers. I think we all know what a sidewalk is and what it is between curb. I didn't know what a qualified wholesale and competent and who was going to define those. And, um, I think on the sidewalk widths, it looks like they went from 10 to 6. But are, are, is staff agreed at 6, or is that a point of discussion?
We're, we're fine at 6. We were just pointing out the differences in case Council had any concerns.
You're just trying to track the changes.
Track the changes, yeah.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions or do you want to hear from citizens that's signed up to speak? What do you want to do next?
I have one more question.
Yes.
I didn't see the, attaching the diagram like we did, like we spoke once before. Is that, I didn't see that in there.
Yeah, so that's exhibit, so in the ordinance, we referred to exhibit C. This would be exhibit C.
This one?
This one. This is, this is what's attached. So in your packet, uh, we had the ordinance, we had exhibit A, which is the meets and bounds. That stayed the same between both versions. We had two exhibit Bs and then one exhibit C, which is this.
But the last time we spoke, that wasn't the map we, we agreed to?
There was confusion on that, um, because this was what was in the original packet on May 24th. There was a different exhibit that was shown by the applicant on the screen at the May 24th meeting. That was, that was changed. And then that had, um, that one, that version.
That version was not at our last meeting.
That's what she's saying.
Okay.
Drusilla, remember when I had in May 24th, the blue one and the red one, all the different site plans? That was the site plan. The only one that wasn't was the black and white one. And that's where the confusion is. The rest of them had the, the act, the walkway and it had the driveway where you changed. If you look at the two blue ones, the two red, green and blue ones that we used to try to figure this out, that was the site plan.
But are you comfortable with this being exhibit C?
Yes.
What I was saying is at our, our June 14th meeting, and we all talked about the map and we all kept looking at that site plan that was on the screen. Everybody was okay with it. And that is not the map we're showing today. And I don't remember you saying, hey, that's not my right map. Is that, that's where I'm confused at, because that's the, that was the meeting, not, don't go back to May 24th. Go back to the meeting, we were attaching a map to the ordinance.
Yeah, this was the, this was the one that we had up on the screen because this is the one that had been officially submitted to staff.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, that's what this council agreed to, was attaching this map. And now we have a new map. That's where I'm confused. And I'm a little frightened on going forward, what, what's going to happen at my next meeting is going to have some other change. So there's where I'm concerned. Not now.
Councilmember Lee?
Well, to that point, I, if a decision is made, I think we have the option of choosing which map we want to go with. No?
Council has the option of choosing which, which map you want.
Because I'm in agreement with Councilmember Rogers. The map that was agreed to on the 24th is not this map. And I would prefer the other map if we're going to move forward with any of these warrants. I, I, I'm like, I'm a little confused as well. There's just been so many different changes. I'm, I'm a little afraid to make a decision because we're just kind of spitting out words about what might be on it or what might be part of the warrant, or scratch out this word or scratch out that word. I would like to see something more defined, um, on paper, that we are all in agreement with. I still feel like there's some differences between what the developer is saying, they want to do, and what this, what staff is saying, what we'll agree to. So I don't know that we would be here all night trying to iron out all those words. So I'm, I'm a little confused as to like what, which version we're going to go with, what we're going to be considering as warrants, not warrants. How, how are we going to go about figuring this out tonight?
Councilmember Crouch, is, was that, are you done, Councilmember Lee? Councilmember Crouch?
I, I agree with you to an extent. I, we've heard every one of these, this is to be the third time now, May, June and June again. And, um, what we've got tonight is, is what was originally done, the staff's recommendation and then, uh, the developer's option. And if, it's, I think we've got the basis for if we, and, and what we were asked to do is either go with, uh, staff's recommendation, developer's recommendation, a combo of the two or the original staff recommendation. So I think where we're at right now, at least what it's, what it seems to me, just nobody's got it documented properly yet, is that we're going with a combination of the two. When Connie went back through them and asked Steve if he was okay with those versions, we need to do that again, or we need to walk through each one and get the, the wording exactly right? Alan? I mean, because this is going to be an official document, right? When we get done with it, it's going to be our path forward. And granted, it's going to change again, I, I think. As he gets tenants onboard, it could change again and it could be another plan that's similar to this, but not exactly like that.
Well, that kind of goes back to why I now understand why staff said, or explained to me that this is not the appropriate time to do these many warrants. Because we, we have to remember that we will be setting a precedence for future developments. And I don't want developers thinking they can bring us 50 warrants every time they have a project and use this as an example of why we should push their projects through. We, we have a code. Like it or hate it, we have a code. And I think our job as council is to ensure that we're following that code as much as possible and within reason. And we have worked with this developer. I think our staff to exhaustion has probably done everything they can to try to get us to a place where we can approve this. I honestly am not comfortable this evening approving any of this. Because to say, um, we have a combination of both, let's approve all the warrants, to me is not definitive. I need, I want to see definitive on paper, what is it that we're agreeing to do with that May, or that 24th map, May, was it May 24th? That map attached and that diagram attached. So that when we make that decision, there is no more up in the air and coming back and saying, hey, we want to make another change. So I'm not, I'm, I could not vote on something that just says a combination of both. Um, I would need to see everything lined out in writing, which if we do that tonight, we'd be here till 1:00 in the morning. So what are our options regarding that?
Well, it seemed like we got an agreement between both parties, staff and the developer, to use this exhibit for the map, if you want to call it a map. It's the site plan. And if they both agree to that.
It's not a site plan. And, and it's, it's not a site plan. And, and they don't want it to be referred to as a site plan. So let's be careful. Our words matter.
If they're both in agreement to use this exhibit C, then why can't we just move forward and use that as exhibit C? If everybody's in agreement for it.
So I'm happy to clarify what, what the staff's original recommendation was. That site plan that originally everybody saw on the 24th. And that was to postpone the warrants until a time when they were appropriate. And that's truly the staff recommendation. What we have here is some council direction that said start from the 14th. That's what we, that's what we did. We took, the recommendation was to go back and do this at the appropriate time. That was the staff recommendation. What we did was take council direction from the 14th and try to make some sense out of the warrants that were written. That's the difference, just to clarify.
Councilmember Crouch, are you done?
Well, I, I'd like to see this resolved and I'd not drag it out for another month. I, I don't see the reason to keep, can you dragging it out? If, if there's three words in a paragraph to get everybody to agree, staff and the developer to agree to it, I don't see why we can't vote on that specific thing, make a motion, pass it. And then if, if there's two or three that we, that they don't agree on, then we strike them and then bring them back at the next round of, uh, development process through the permitting process.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Lee, I think you were asking the city attorney for some advice or comment on that. Did I read that correctly?
Well, I, I guess so. Because where I'm at right now is, to what, to Trey's point, the recommendation is to deny the warrants. Or initially it was to deny the warrants unless they could fit the 723.3 grid, right?
Yeah, so our, our original recommendation was to approve the base zoning. So approve P5 zoning. And then we had, in the original 24th, May 24th packet, we had a list of what they requested, staff's analysis and like, and our, where we found common ground on it, that, you know, that the 330 block grid could be provided internally. You know, and then you, you'd have that 720 block grid provided with the common, in this, a combination between things that functioned as public streets. And then we had several others in here that we generally agreed on, but out of the original, I think it was 29 warrants. And I think this is 10. So there, so then it would push all the rest of them to later stages. So that was the original recommendation.
Right. Then that went to P and Z. P and Z, it was approved at P and Z to send it through with the warrants.
No, P and Z denied the, denied the request entirely because they felt that there were too many.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right.
Too many things outstanding to, to recommend approval.
Correct. So we, as a council, approve the 14th reading. Is that the right, correct date? Is that the right, correct date?
So on the May 24th, council approved the first reading with the warrants as submitted by the applicant. It was, this was the wording. And what has been the disconnect is that the wording has then changed since the 24th.
Exactly, and that is my point. So we, if this had not been changed another time, we may be at a point where we could move on. But the problem is, is we keep approving stuff and then they keep changing it again and we keep getting a different map and now we gotta change the wording. And it's not just the wording on one paragraph, it's the wording on an entire 28 warrants and we gotta look at each one differently. My question is, at this point, since we're on the second reading, can we not make a decision tonight to clean this language up? Or do we have to make a decision because we are now still on the second reading? Can it go back to P and Z? Or can it go back to the original process? I'm just trying to understand as council, what are our options?
Mayor, council, Councilmember Lee, everything you just listed is an option. The pain that you are feeling is the pain that comes with negotiating and drafting legislation at the dais. There is a reason this is not done with any frequency in organizations that are professionally run. That's one reason why staff had its recommendation the way it was on the 24th. So zoning is a legislative act for which you have complete discretion. You can approve it, not approve it, approve some modified version of it. So I'm not trying to make your job harder. I want you to understand this is completely within your discretion to decide what to do with. And so tonight, you have in your agenda packet, a document that was prepared by staff as an ordinance and an exhibit with the warrants that was staff's best understanding after multiple meetings and phone calls with the applicant as of the agenda deadline. What you also have offered before you is a different ordinance and different exhibits that were submitted at 4:33. Your executive session, your executive session started at 4:30. So I saw this list myself about 30 minutes ago. Now, if you are okay with that list, you have the power to proceed tonight. That's absolutely within your discretion. If you want to use staff's ordinance and staff's list, but then modify it as the applicant is asking at the podium, my recommendation is let's get the details down. And let's just stay here as long as it takes to go through the list and make sure every word is correct. Otherwise, you can table it. You can direct staff to keep working with the applicant and have another document that's ready by the agenda deadline for a future meeting.
Councilmember Crouch?
I'll let Steve talk and then if it's okay, I'll talk after him.
Thank you. I just want to make some clarifications.
Please get to the mics.
Clarifications. We are, we will not go forward if we have to do all this again at Site Plan. That's what the zoning warrants, P5 puts it all in place. If we don't have the warrants now, what, why would they do it at Site Plan? And that's all I'm saying. I'm at that point with the staff. As far as what Alan just said, we've been working for about a week and a half. Finally, we got cooperation with your gentleman that works for you. I'm not sure his name.
His name is Resin Pullum. He's the Assistant City Attorney.
And Resin came up with the ordinance and we came up with our issues to the ordinance red line. That was given over a week ago. Those are the two versions you're looking at. Today, I was told that maybe it'd be easier instead of to bring back some of the stuff from the five or six issues that we were discussing. So I went back to the city, to my attorneys, and we made that change, those changes. And we handed it to these guys at 4:30. That's correct. But it was not to add another version. It was to try to help clarify things when we got here tonight. And it was based on conversations with Cheryl and Driscilla and John and staff. I was trying to get to the middle with staff. That's all. I understand this has gotten cumbersome and a lot of stuff, but I am not comfortable going forward if we're gonna say on about 20 of the items, we'll just deal with it at Site Plan. Your code doesn't state that at all. Your code states that you put P5 zoning on here, it's P5 zoning. At Site Plan, I haven't got to that yet, but I'm assuming that we will have some other issues when we get to the nitty gritty of the final, final Site Plan. However, I need to know that I can do the streets and the orientation of the buildings and everything like we've got, which is the bulk of this. I did add some other stuff. I added about the civic area, those kind of items. All those items are very close. I think we have five or six that if we added the language we just discussed, that would make the city staff happy with the language and I'm okay with it. And a couple of the items you said, fine. But I would like to have a vote tonight. This has been a process I started with a meeting with Paul and Trey in March of last year. And it took me four months just to figure out how to code, just to get into the city. I've been meeting with the staff since late August with some conversations and then September, October, November, December, January, February, March, until we went into P and Z. And the progression didn't really get started until you guys voted twice. And then we, the following week, on that Tuesday, we set up a meeting on a Wednesday. That's when the real negotiation from the city staff got to the point where we were fixing things.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Durham. We have one person signed up to speak. I'd like to hear from our, from that so that that's off of our list. It's Debbie Moore. If you please state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Debbie Moore, 1306 Church Street in Bastrop. What I'd like to say now is, Mayor, council, Mr. Hoffman, is not at all what I started out thinking that I wanted to say. Because I can't, it's, I can't agree with you more. This is too important a deal to approve something when there's been so many changes and you don't know exactly what you're voting for. How can it be a second reading when it's a variation of one and two and maybe three? It's like it's a new reading on something that has not been established before. You have not been, your attorney will not have an opportunity to timely renew, review it. You're doing something by the seat of your pants. You've got, if you approve this tonight, I think it's bordering on a dereliction of duty. Because there's been so many changes. You've got an excellent staff who's made recommendations, has been negotiating. And even as we come here today, the applicant is making more changes, adding more words, doing more things. I was gonna talk about the fact that, maybe the fact that there's no sidewalks on the other side in the other burlesque and it's a reason why we got drag races there. And maybe a sidewalk on Burlesque and East would help. But that kind of seems irrelevant at the moment. To go forward tonight and approve something when you have to go down and, is this, is this, which version? How, I would beg you, it's too important. What you do here will affect that property forever. And if the developer can't do it with, under our codes, that's, that's okay if he can't do it. But to think that this is the only development that might come on that piece of property ain't gonna happen. There's gonna be another developer come along and who knows what they're going to be able to do after they purchase the land. So I would beg you to not pass this tonight, to take another look at it, have it come back with words that will not change at the next reading. And then you'll know what you're voting for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone else signed up to speak on 12C?
No, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Crouch?
So on May 24th, we approved every warrant that had came before us, right? Unanimous, five to nothing vote. And then we asked for it to come back again and it, now everybody's back again. And then we're down to seven items. I think it's seven items. And both sides have agreed to the wording on it. And I don't see why we can't just change that wording now, get both people to agree to it, vote on it, move forward and let the process go through. I just, I don't understand that. How we could go from voting unanimously on May 24th to not even, and to get, have 28 warrants and then to get to this point right now when we have seven left with just a little bit of, a few words to modify in it to get them to where they're in agreement? Why we can't just spend the time to write that down and do it right now and be done with it? And then go to the next round for the, for the process? What we're doing is holding up development. And what we're doing is, is really showing what our code isn't allowing people to do in the city of Bastrop. It's not, it's not allowing a full build out of the things to come here. And it's keeping retail out of our city and it's, it's keeping a lot of development out of the city. If it wasn't, then everybody'd be running here to come develop here. And they, they are until they get to this process and then they're not. So I don't see why we can't just finish this up and get the last seven items worded correctly and move on.
Councilmember Lee?
I kind of think that this project is, is a little unique. Because my understanding and talking with Steve was this has kind of been going on since 2011 or 13, which was before the B3 codes. So in this particular case, they were probably heading in one direction with a different set of ordinances. B3 codes appeared and they had to switch gears. So to me, this is a little bit different and unique. If you get a business, businesses will bill to our code. I'm never gonna say they will, never gonna get a business that won't bill to our code because I don't think that that is the case. I think that, I think that there will be situations where it will come up. And, and in this situation, they have to like completely switch gears on where they were going with their project because of the B3 code. So I can see why we are where we are in some cases. What I cannot agree to is we've just kind of said, do you agree with this? Do you agree with that? Do you want to change this? Do you want to change that? We don't know what we would be voting on. I would rather have them take the time, go back, write it out, hand us a document, Steve say I'm good with this, the cities say I'm good with this, and then we vote. But I cannot vote on words that are not in, on paper for me to clearly see and understand what I'm voting on. Now, having said that, I have to wonder if they didn't follow the process and present their warrants at Site Plan, how far would they be in their project? Because I think that we all sitting here know that we need to tweak the B3 codes. They need to be tweaked. I don't think anybody up here denies that. So I can't see them, if they follow the process, coming back with some suggestions and then we being able to address it at that time when they bring it to us. But we're, they're asking us to address 28 warrants at one time that keeps changing every time we meet on it. So how far would they be if they had brought it at the time that they have requested? We might not be still waiting on them to purchase the property. We may be further down the line. But unfortunately, we're here where we are now. We all did agree to that first reading. They changed what we agreed to. So we can't then just come back and say, okay, yeah, we'll accept your changes. Then they changed it again and then they changed it again and then they added a map. And now there's all these not required on here. I just, like, like our guest spoke, I just, I don't think that we will be doing our, our duty to ensure that what we adopt and vote on tonight is solid and secure for future developments. And I don't want to set a precedence where we are going to open the door up for people, for us to have to do this over and over and over again. I think that, I'm not opposed to any of the discussion that was tonight and the agreements that were made. All I'm saying is, let's get it down on paper so that when we vote on it, we know exactly what we're voting on. It's on paper, it's worded correctly, the attorney can look over it and we make a solid decision. That's all I'm saying.
Let, we need to finish our deliberation. Mayor Protem Rogers?
Alan, since this, since this is so much different than the first reading, is it really a second reading? Or with all these changes and let's say we vote on something, would that still need a second reading? Because it's something totally different. I don't see how this could be the second reading of something that's totally different than the first reading.
Our charter in Bastrop allows there to be changes in a document between the first reading and the second reading. It's not as strict to prohibit it altogether.
Doesn't have a percentage?
But if council, no, it does not have a percentage of how much an ordinance can change or be revised between readings. But this is a legislative act that you are taking in rezoning a piece of property and approving these exceptions to the standard zoning for that designation. If you are unclear on the details or unclear on what you're voting on, then there's a reason to either delay and work on it further with staff or stay here longer and try to come to some sense of certainty before you vote. But if you're not clear, then there's a question of whether it's ripe.
Councilmember Crouch?
I'd like to make a motion to modify the item 12C as a, as a combination of the two readings based on what we've heard tonight and what I've marked down in my notes and see if we can get this approved tonight. And a lot of it's gonna be staff recommendation. And I don't know if there's any issues with council voting for staff recommendation on some items.
So I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch that we approve 2022-15 with his notes. Do I have a second?
You want to hear my notes first?
Do I have a second? So the motion fails for lack of a second. Does anybody else have a motion?
I have a motion. I have a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we table this, this item for this evening that the changes and recommendations made here tonight be implemented into what I'd like to say is a final amendment of the warrants and presented at the next council meeting for action.
I second that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee that we table ordinance number 2022-15, that it come back at the next council meeting. I'm putting that in, is that what your intention? Come back at the next council meeting with the, what I, I think what you're saying, you said hoping for the final, what's in the packet is the map. We're down to one ordinance, one map, one, one everything final. You know what you're voting on and it's reviewed by the attorney when it's in the packet.
Correct.
Is that, and I'm not trying to add words, I'm trying to make sure I'm clear. Okay. And is that what you are, and I have a second from Mayor Protem Rogers. Is there any discussion about that motion? Mr. City Manager?
I'd like to make a suggestion before, before council votes on that motion. This motion is, as I understand it, it's, it's really similar to the motion council made and was ultimately approved on, on June 14th. I have two suggestions. One is that the motion not say the next council meeting. I think that was part of the problem from, from June 14th. If we're still dealing with versions from 4:30 today and to steal a word from the city attorney, it's probably not ripe. And that we, we bring it back when it's ready. Council, I think we can learn from our mistakes, me included. I, I don't think this thing was ready for first reading on May 24th. And I think that's been made painfully obvious these last meetings. I think we bring it back when the applicant meets deadlines and we get this nailed down and we can produce a packet that gets sent to council and it's then not, not changed. The, the other suggestion- The, the other suggestion I would make is that if there's a motion to, to table and that there's gonna be work done between the applicant and the applicant's attorney and staff and the city attorney until it gets all done, is that there not be any more conversations between the applicant and individual members of the council. I think those conversations are pretty obviously not helping getting this, this thing done. If, if council has a direction on what you're hoping to see happen here, then what council ought to do is communicate that to, to, to me or to Mr. Jobe. And then we'll have a common understanding and we'll get that, we'll get that done. Thanks.
Councilmember Lee?
I would agree to take out next meeting at the recommendation of the city manager.
So it's table it for tonight and come back with a second reading that is a consolidated recommendation? One, one ordinance, one exhibit, one map, one, all the other stuff that belongs in it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that is an amendment. Are you acceptable to the amendment?
Yes, with the comment that I don't set up a meeting, sir? I can't stop them from walking in my door.
All right. And I didn't think, we, we didn't talk about meetings in your motions, and you don't intend to include that, correct? Okay. Counsel, are you clear on the motion from councilmember Lee and the second by mayor Protem Rogers? Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
The motion, the motions unanimous, it is, is it 8:37? Counsel, we're gonna take a, a quick break at 8:37.
Can I have one clarification so we can work it through quicker? I think we know how to fix this stuff. What exhibit do you want?
The one that you want approved. The one that you guys work out. That's, that's the one.
Okay.
All right, it's 8:37. We're gonna take a five-minute bio-break. Come back? All right, it is 8:44, and we are back in regular session. We are on item 12D, right? Does everybody think that? And we have D E and, D E F and G left, and they're very, they're all grouped together, they're on the same project. We're on item 12D. Hold a public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 202204 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, annexing Bastrop, Colorado Bend Phase 1 for 312.61 acres of land out of the Stephen F. Austin survey, abstract number 2, located west of Lovers Lane and southeast of the Colorado River, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, adoption, establishing zoning and character districts, repealer and severability, filing and enforcement, establishing an effective date and proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the July 14th, 2022 regular agenda for the second reading. And if you are like me, you said, but wait a minute, didn't we do that on February 22nd? And then you grab Jennifer in the hallway and you go, but we already did this, and I held a public hearing and everything. And then she says, yes, but you didn't vote, and it's been more than 90 days. And that's why we had to publish for another public hearing, and that's what's going on with that. So learned a little, learned a little planning in the hallways. Ms. Bills?
Sure. And it is actually July 12th, it's our next meeting. I really committed to July 14th in all of my original staff reports and had to go and fix them all, and did not get on this one, apparently.
Okay.
So, so it is July 12th. So this is the first of four items that we're discussing tonight that is for the Bastrop, Colorado Bend project. There's gonna be a mixed-use development, it's gonna have primary use as film, filming as the anchor kind of employment center use there. So the first step is to annex the first request, which is the 312 acres of land. We, on March 8th, annexed a portion of the river that is adjacent to the Pecan Park development. So that is our contiguous property now to the, to this development. So the city limits is all one big piece. So you can see right here, the Colorado River's in the pink, and that's now in the city limits. And now Bastrop, Colorado Bend in the red, this is what we're annexing, or holding the first hearing, first reading on tonight for the 312 acres. It's bounded by Lovers Lane on the east, and then in their plan, they've got a future, future roadway on the south and the other boundary of the property.
Thank you, Ms. Bills. I, are you done?
No, I'm done on that one.
Okay.
Any, any questions on the annexation?
Okay, so can I open the public hearing? I am officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak public hearing?
No, ma'am.
I am officially closing the public hearing. Happy to take a motion?
I motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from mayor Protem Rogers?
Can we put this, I'm sorry, sorry. Can it be on the consent agenda for the second reading, or no?
Not for annexation.
Okay, just, just wondering.
Second.
I have a second, I have a motion from mayor Protem Rogers. I have a second from councilmember Kirkland. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. It's unanimously approved. We're moving on to item 12E. 12E reads as follow. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2022-07 of the city council of the city of Texas approving the Bastrop, Colorado Bend zoning concept scheme, changing the zoning for 312.591 acres out of the Stephen F. Austin survey, abstract two, for, from P2 rural to PEC, which is Employment Center, and establishing a plan on 312.591 acres located west of Lovers Lane within the city limits of the city of Bastrop, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, adoption, repealer, severability, enforcement, proper notice and meeting, establishing an effective date, and move to include on the July 12th regular agenda for the second reading. Ms. Bills?
Yes. So I'm going to kind of lump this with the next two items, just to kind of give you one bigger presentation, and also because I kind of got the items out of order. For the second reading, we will have them in order. That'll be annexation, future land use plan amendment, transportation plan amendment, and then the zoning. For first reading, it, it, we can do them out of order because this is not the final decision. The final decision will be at the next meeting. So, but the area we're looking at for the zoning is the 312 acres that we just discussed for annexation. When you annex a property, our code calls out that the base default zoning that is assigned to that property is P2. So when we annex it on the 12th, it's P2, and then the next action by council is to rezone it. And the request for the rezone is to PEC, Employment Center. And we've had discussions a little bit before on what's the difference between Employment Center and P5? Because a lot of people go to a retail shopping center to work, but a lot of people also go there to shop. And PEC, the main reason everyone's going there is to work. So that's, that's our difference between PEC and P5. They both have a lot of commercial uses in it. They sometimes look similar, but you're not having general members of the public going. You're having people that are going there for the purpose of working. So the request for this property, PEC, for this case, it allows a mix of land uses that all work together for the main kind of idea. So we have Business Park as one of examples because we're citing industrial and manufacturing and work centers in the Business Park. One of the other things that is being requested along with this zoning is a future land use plan amendment. Because when we envisioned this in our conference of plan six or seven years ago, at the time, there was no, no plans for annexing out this far, no plans for extending utilities. So the land use that was envisioned at the time was rural residential, being large lot residential up against the river. Now that we've had, you know, more information with the ability to annex, the ability to extend utilities to this area, we're now recommending changing the future land use plan to the category of industry, which is our, in our future land use plan on the, on the gradation, the heavier kind of intensity use that allows for those bigger end users, which in this case would be the filming use. So what this looks like in our zoning map, it's, the Employment Center is our gray, gray zoning district, the rest are shades of purple. With the zoning concept scheme, one of the things we ask for before you start the whole process is a conceptual drainage plan that we want to make sure that the intensity of use you're trying to do is something that the drainage infrastructure is either there for or can be built to support. So they did a conceptual drainage plan that's been reviewed by the city engineer, and conceptually they can, they can drain what they plan to do to the Colorado River. A lot of this property is in some floodplain, and that has been taken into account in all of the, the current conceptual drainage plans. One of the other things we look at is the potential street connections. So in this, for this section, because this is the 312 acres of a larger 546 acres, what we're looking at for just this section is the Lovers Lane that's already existing, that they're going to dedicate some additional right-of-way for because it's one of our multimodal streets. And then also, they're going to dedicate streets at the southern boundary of this section, and, and then their plan is to build that section so they can take access for this part of the development. You can see here that this part actually does not, they own, the gray property here is the remainder of the 546 acres, which will come in on a future annexation zoning request. So in, in the plan, they've shown some proposed street detail, and all of this information was also part of their development agreement that was originally approved back in June. So everything that has been proposed has already been reviewed at a little higher level, and we're just, as we continue through the process, we're drilling down into the detail. So they'll, you have the existing right-of-way for Lovers Lane, but they will be, so that there's no conflict with Margie's Way, taking, putting in a road here for their, we're calling it the new east-west road right now. And they'll have a little bit of civic space, basically kind of some leftover right-of-way that'll, the city will end up owning as a little parklet. So some of the proposed street detail you see in here is, we talked during the development agreement about doing a public frontage plan and, and seeing a little bit more of that detail during the zoning. So this is the Lovers Lane cross-section. So you can see Lovers Lane existing, they'll build a sidewalk, they'll have some streetlights. There's also a large drainage soil that's going in, that's under construction now by the county. So they've, the owner has already granted an easement to the county where they're building drainage improvements currently along Lovers Lane. So you'll see they have the road, sidewalk, and then their actual boundary fence or wall will be set back quite a bit from the actual road. For the east-west road that'll run on the southern boundary of the section, you'll see that they have a rural road cross-section with a sidewalk. And then again, they'll have a privacy wall on a berm for this section. Internally, they've proposed their own internal driveway that, one of the things we'll look at when we drill down to the site plan is making sure all of this meets fire code. That's our, our concern for access. This is their proposed layout that's consistent with what is in the development agreement. So the, the main part up here along Lovers and the new road will be their permanent buildings. These are their permanent sound stages, warehouses, offices, all those kind of things. You'll also see they will throughout the property have some onsite lodging for people to stay while they're onsite. So just some other kind of requirements that came up. The, the streets will be rebuilt to the rural cross-section at this time. We have been working on the applicant, with the applicant on a traffic impact analysis. And one of the other items that we were intending to try to have to council deny, but we still had some more details to work out that we're planning to line up with the July 12th meeting, is a development agreement amendment. While we've been working with the property owner on the traffic impact analysis, we were getting bottlenecks essentially where all the traffic would come out. So we've been working on solutions, and that's what the language of the development agreement amendment is addressing, is how to, how the applicant will address those traffic concerns, and the timing of when those improvements will go in, and how they're getting paid for. All the, all the fun stuff. And then, oops, inherited trees on the site, 26 inches, inches and greater will be preserved, and that'll come in on the public improvement plans and site plan. So overall, the site will have, be allowed to go up to 80% impervious cover. Of course, they'll have to do a final drainage plan to make sure they're conveying all the drainage appropriately. They can have a building height of five stories. Some of the standards that were waived with the development agreement is no, no maximum block lengths or perimeters, given that they're bounded by the Colorado River. No pedestrian shed requirements, no build-to-line or frontage requirements that require the, the buildings to be built up to the rural road, and no parking locations. And when we originally sent out the notice for that, this, we sent out 61 notices, and we got three responses, one with no objection and two opposed. And the P and Z, when they heard this back, I think in February, it was four to one vote to recommend approval. It takes five votes to make an official recommendation to the city council, so there was no official recommendation from P and Z on this item. So just some next steps after we get all of these items approved. So the second reading will come back to city council on July 12th. And then we still have a series of applications for this 312 acres. They've, the applicants already started on the preliminary drainage plans and preliminary infrastructure plans, those have both actually been approved by the city engineer. We actually took the preliminary plat to P and Z at their last meeting. So we have the preliminary plat because that doesn't really change between whether or not it's in the city limits at this time. Once this all gets approved, they can move forward with their final drainage plan and then the public improvement plan, and that's where they're actually going to bring in the, the construction plans for the streets, the utilities that are gonna be extended to the site. Once those are approved, then we have the final plat that comes back to P and Z for this 312 acres. And then after that, they can turn in site development plans for the buildings and then building permits for the specific buildings.
Thank you, Ms. Bills. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Bills? Councilmember Kirkland?
Yeah, do, do any of those things come back to council?
No. The only one, the only thing that does come back to council is the public improvement plan agreement. And that comes in between the public improvement plans and the final plat, and that's the, we normally put those on the consent agenda because they're a standard agreement that the property owner is agreeing to put in all the public improvements. And if they're going, if they want to record the plat ahead of building those improvements, they have to provide us fiscal surety. So it just sets out the terms of, of providing those improvements and how we also accept them when they're finished building the city as a process for making sure they've been built per plan and per our codes. And then we get a two-year maintenance period to fix any defects in that two years. So that's what the, and that will be the only thing that comes back to city council. What will come back is, since we're only at 312 acres, the remainder of the 546 acres will still come back with annexation, zoning, and the conference of plan amendments. So this is just for the northern part of the property.
If you go back two or three slides to the map, so all, yeah, that one. All of that, that proposed layout, and with the zoning being the Employment Center, that allows them to have the onsite housing and the, where they're gonna have their studios, all that kind of stuff, is that, that's really the purpose of Employment Center zoning? Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's why there's not warrants? Because they're saying this is what we want to do with this EC zoning?
Yes.
Okay. Just trying to clarify.
And, and the EC zoning is actually built to be a little bit more flexible and to have some wider parameters, knowing that, you know, if you build a, if you build a campus headquarters, that's a different use than...
It's a call center.
A call center, yeah. It's a larger use, they have more specific requirements. And they usually are going somewhere very specific and not bringing the public into that area.
Okay. So for, for, until such time that an owner wants to ask for different zoning, it will be EC zoning? It will be Employment Center zoning? And we have agreed, we know what can be done on that piece of property?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's a very specific, in their development agreement, concept plan and list of allowances. Same with the zoning concept scheme.
Okay. All right. So you said it was okay to do it out of order. Is, is it okay with Mr. Attorney to do them out of order? Because I can just as easily read 12F. I have that ability.
Mayor, you're certainly allowed to take them out of order. It's okay. I don't think the order really matters for purposes of tonight's meeting.
Excellent. All right. The good news is I already read 12E. Would anyone like to make a motion on 12E, the zoning concept scheme?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland and a second from Councilmember Lee. Is there any further discussion on the zoning concept scheme? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We're moving on to 12F. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 20 dash, 2022-05 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, amending the comprehensive plan by changing the future land use designation from rural residential to industry for Bastrop, Colorado Bend LLP for 312.591 plus or minus acres of land out of the Stephen F. Austin survey, abstract two, to the west of Lovers Lane, located within the city limits of Bastrop, as attached in Exhibit A and providing for findings of fact, adoption, enforcement, a repealer and severability, establishing an effective date, and proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the July 12th, 2022, regular agenda for the second reading.
And this one, you can motion to put on the consent agenda if you so choose. So this item is the, so this is the concept plan that was included in the development agreement. So this is what everyone saw back in June. So it laid out some kind of basic uses in the development agreement. Those, as we saw on the last layout, will be up front. Some accommodation areas, recreation, kind of flexible areas on the, along the river. But for the purposes of tonight, since they were only requesting annexation of the 312 acres, at this point, we're only looking at amending the future land use on the 312 acres. So the balance of the 546 will remain rural residential until they come in with the annexation for that section. So because we like to be in compliance with our comprehensive plan, the request is to change the future land use designation to industry, which then allows them to have the Employment Center zoning. And that's what it currently looks like on our future land use map and that will be what it looks like when it changes.
It's a race.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Kirkland.
Can I second that and?
Yes, and then we can discuss.
Ask for a motion for it to be on the consent agenda?
Do we, do we need to?
We can.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Is it okay for it to be on the consent agenda?
Well, don't you have to make an amendment?
That's what I'm asking you.
Yes, I approve said amendment.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland and a second from Mayor Pro Tem Rogers to approve and place on the consent agenda. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, we are on our last item, 12G. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2022-06 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, amending the transportation master plan, master thoroughfare plan and street grid for Bastrop, Colorado Bend LLP for 546.364 plus or minus acres of land of the Stephen F. Austin survey, abstract two, to the west of Lane, located within the city limits of the City of Bastrop and the City of Bastrop extraterritorial jurisdiction as attached in Exhibit A and providing for findings of fact, adoption, enforcement, a repealer and severability, establishing an effective date and proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the July 12th. Can it be consent?
This can be consent as well, yes.
Regular agenda for the second reading. And if someone wants to make a motion, they could make it on the consent. Ms. Bills?
Yes. So this amendment is to our master transportation plan, which is its own separate document that was approved in 2017 and we updated in 2019 with the street grid. So what you'll see, the blue line on there is our, in our master thoroughfare plan. And what it showed, and it was in both ours and the county's plan, was Lovers Lane coming down and then a future road coming across and eventually having a bridge that crossed somewhere there-ish. I, I always say somewhere there-ish because at this point, these are lines on a map. We have done, done no engineering. We have no money to go build a bridge. So we, this county's looking.
We are accepting money if anyone would like to give us money.
We will accept money and the county's looking for money, but at present, we don't have any actual plans to build a bridge. So with the 2019 update with the street grid, this is the 720 grids. When this was planned to be rural residential with houses, you would need these streets to serve the neighborhood. So what is being requested at this time is, and we said the whole 546 acres, because what we're looking at is removing the grid, since they're only annexing the 312 acres, removing the grid in the 312 acres and relocating the master transportation plan road to go there-ish. And again.
Ish.
There-ish. We have no plans. We have no money. It's a line on a map. And what we'll bring back to you with the development agreement next meeting is the, the traffic that they're generating is far less than would have been generated with a residential neighborhood, but it's still generating a traffic that's impacting the roadway network. And so it goes off the map, but we're looking at other improvements that provide additional ways in and out of this area on the existing street network to the north as opposed to going to the south. Because this bridge is needed not just for this development, but for, more for all of this development and that'll be at a later date. But we still want to plan that somewhere we're having a bridge. So that's what the request tonight is, is to realign that road and to get rid of the grid on the northern section. And if for some reason they never come in and they just want to default back, they can still come in with rural residential and build houses with that grid.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Bills?
Motion to approve, place on the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve and place on the consent agenda from Councilmember Kirkland?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Lee. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Excellent.[1781.98]